Good evening, everyone, and good evening, councillors. We are joining and streaming live via YouTube and joining our community for our ordinary council meeting, the first Monday of the month, the 7th of September. And a welcome to everyone. We're just making sure that all of our technology is working, and I think that our governance team and our IT department have that all working. As per normal with our online meetings, I'll do a bit of a roll call before we start the meeting, and this is just to ensure that with these current situations that we have in Victoria and indeed across the world with the COVID-19 pandemic, that we are able to meet remotely or from each other, but the stipulations must be that we can see each other, hear each other, be heard and be seen. So we'll just do a bit of a sound check. I have pressed the mute all button, but I'll press the unmute all button, and you can go through and then press your button as I go through. So I'll just do a bit of a tech check more than anything, which will double as our role call. First person I'll go to is the Deputy Mayor, councillor Alan McFadden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear everybody.
Thank you. Councillor Howe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear everybody, thank you.
Councillor Brad Law.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah, all good from this end, thank you.
See you in here, councillor Daryl Harriman.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dara White.
Yes, I can hear you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody, I can see everybody also.
Excellent. Councillor Graham Middlemas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear everyone, thank you.
Excellent, we can see and hear you. Councillor Sharon Gibson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I can see and hear.
Excellent. And councillor Kelly O'Callaghan.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, eyes and ears on everybody, thank you.
Excellent, that's good news, thank you. And our CEO, Stephen Piersenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, all clear from my end.
Thank you, great. That's fantastic, that's our tech check. We also have our general management team, our governance team and our IT team within this Zoom meeting. We are broadcasting live via YouTube and then streaming through on our Facebook page as well, so just with those checks that we have made, we'll officially start the meeting now. We'll start the meeting with the opening prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom, the power and the glory are yours now and forever, amen. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Brakalong people of the Gunai Kurnai Nation, and I pay my respects to their elders, past, present. If there are any other elders joining us this evening, I'd like to acknowledge them as well, and even though we are in many different lands, our respects to the First Nations people of Australia. Item three on our agenda, the seating councillors, is apologies and a leave of absence, as we've done a bit of a tech check already, I note that there are no apologies and there are no leaves of absence at the moment. Declarations of interest is the fourth item on our agenda. Are there any declarations of interest this evening, councillors? Councillor White, councillor Harriman, I can see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I have a conflict of interest on 16.2, proposed resolution number three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Harriman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on item 16.2, resolution two, on the grounds that I sit, am a member of the Lions Club, which refers to two Lions Club applications, and I also sit on the executive of the Girl Guides Committee at Burnett Park, who have also got an application in. I'd also like to declare on item 19.5, it's been raised to my attention that I may have a conflict of interest, I'd just like to advise, I have had legal advice, I do not have a conflict of interest. I also do not have a predetermined position on this, this is the GREC management operation of GREC, I do not have a predetermined position and won't be making my mind up until I have heard all arguments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. If there's no one else.
I just mentioned, just in relation to my conflict of interest, I just didn't perhaps mention it because of my connection with the Advanced Sports Academy. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor White. I also, and I'm following you a little bit here, councillor Harriman, I'm declaring an interest on 16.2, which is our community grants, we have them broken into four resolutions, I am resolution four, with my connection through to the Balarra Folk Festival and also through to the film festival that was mentioned in there as well. And very much like you as well, councillor Harriman, at 19.5, which is enclosed, which is the management and operation of GREC, I too also have sought some legal advice, and I have no conflict of interest on this, but needed to make everyone aware of that, because I previously said that I would seek some advice on that, and I have, and the independent legal advice has come back that I do not have a conflict of interest, and I will be also making a decision on that later this evening. Is there anyone else like to? Declarations of interest? If there's anything that comes up during the meeting, councillors, there's no problems at all, it's just raising your hand and declaring an interest in direct or direct interest. We move to item five, which is the adoption of the previous minutes of the meeting on the 3rd of August. I see a number of hands go up there, I see councillor Gibson and councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Gibson, are you moving those?
Yes, please.
Councillor O'Callaghan.
I'm going to second you, Mr. Mayor.
Seconding, thank you. Councillors, do you have any opposition to that? No? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this? Councillor O'Callaghan? As we have had no opposition and no speakers, we will carry that unanimously for the adoption of the minutes. Thank you, councillors. We'll move to item six, which is the acknowledgements, this is an opportunity for any councillor to raise any formal acknowledgements that need to be made within our community. Any councillors have any acknowledgements this evening? No? Okay. Just give a bit of extra time, no? Okay. So make sure that we don't have any lag in audio, so my delay in waiting is just to make sure that the video is keeping up with what we are doing. We move to public participation time, and this is an opportunity for our community to participate in our meeting. They can either submit a question on notice to this meeting, and the CEO will read that and answer it, or they can also speak as a... to any item, and through this technology, that would be joining us via Zoom. I'm just pulling up some details. Mr. CEO, do we have any questions on notice this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, no questions on notice for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. We do have, however, we have one person meeting us this evening online, is that correct? Just looking for that detail.
Yes, we do, we're seeing one speaker tonight.
I'm just looking for that detail, sorry, Mr. CEO. Have it now, thank you. Right. And we're talking on, okay, thank you very much. So we have one person coming to speak to us this evening, councillors, and they are speaking on item 14.2. I'm just going to admit them, they are in the waiting room at the Zoom. Admit. They're joining us now, hopefully we'll be able to see them here. Hello, Sharon.
Hello, how are you?
Very good, thanks, it's Dan Clancy here, the mayor. You've joined the meeting now at a point where we're ready to talk to you and hear from you.
Yes.
You can hear us and see us?
Perfectly.
Oh, wonderful, the technology's on our side. We recognise that you're talking on item 14.2, you've registered that through Latrobe City town. We have three minutes set aside for you to present to us and then stay online in case the councillors have any questions at all of your presentation. So when you're right to go, we have a timer that I'll keep an eye on, and if you reach the time, I'll give you a bit of away.
I won't be reaching the time.
Right, we're in your heads, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak. I ask the Latrobe City Council to be forward thinkers, as I'm aware that the Victorian Government is asking regional country councils and planners to address high density living to cope with future populations and housing needs. It seems that medium and large parcels of land in the older areas of Latrobe City that are within one kilometre of the CBD are becoming hot property for out-of-town area developers and investors, as the Melbourne markets remain high, giving them less of a profit. I want to support the initiative of the city planners, who are mindful that not all medium to large existing properties are suitable for high-density dwellings and increasing building mass that does not complement or enhance the preferred neighbourhood character and lifestyle of the occupants and the future needs. I am in support of the Latrobe City's town planners in their rejections of a permit to subdivide a block of approximately 800 square metres on 14 High Street Moi to build two high-density dwellings on approximately 200 square metres each, on the rear of the block, leaving a 70-year-old plus weatherboard house on the front of the existing block. During the last two years, five houses in High Street have been purchased and renovated, maintaining the existing single dwelling, the heritage and the urban character. These proposed developments by the developer can completely distract from the surrounding streetscape and sets a precedent for future developers to subdivide similar medium to large size residential blocks in high-density brick veneer caravan park-style dwellings. I'm asking you, the elected councillors, to support the town planner's decision and validate the concerns of the local neighbourhood community. Less than three minutes.
Two minutes and five seconds, well done. Councillors, do we have any questions at all? Councillor Gibson, you have a question?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming and presenting to us today, Sharon. All right, you're talking about the heritage character which you believe will be lost. Is there anything else? Because in the report, it talks about the open space and the footpath and the actual services. Is any of that a concern to you as well?
That is a huge concern, and I didn't think I would have enough time to address that in my speech, so I was waiting for questions on that. I have addressed it to one of the major concerns that the planners had put down, because two of their concerns were scheduled things, like, you know, that the developer hadn't addressed in his initial plans, which I don't have the authority to speak on all the experience. So there is a lot of concerns that the neighbours, there was eight people put forward, or eight families put forward concerns, and a lot of them are... One is because of the major, I don't know if you know, the High Street, the traffic on High Street in the last two years, or the last 12 months, has had three, four accidents, three haven't been reported to the police, on that particular block, and the planner is, there has been a fatality not far from that block. The planner, the developer, wants to put on the existing dwelling, the 70-year-old dwelling that he's currently renting out, a car park in the front of that dwelling, or what do you call it, a driveway and crossover, which means that whoever lives in that or rents that home will have to reverse their car out onto a very, very difficult intersection that has been reported, lots and lots of accidents. We're very concerned about this, because not only will this person have one car, they'll possibly have two or three cars, like most families in our community, and we don't want any future accidents. Also, in order for this development to happen, the developer would have to move two water easements and recently constructed NBN box that was put out in the front of his place. So there's lots of infrastructure that have to happen in order for this developer to build two very, very, very small, huge mass density homes on the back of this property. I don't understand where common sense is in this developer, or the idea of this being put forward to council. Is there anything else, Sharon?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, just a bit of a clarification, please?
A clarification would be great.
Yep, because Sharon, you were talking about the High Street, the road, and how there's been accidents. Now, if I remember correctly, just across the road from there, they've had their fence smashed into a number of times from those accidents, is that what you were talking about, please?
Yes, they've had three, because the way that the bend comes into that, those two dwellings, 14 High Street, and I think it's 16 or something, High Street, the curve of the road and the way that people enter that intersection, they come quite close, they cut the corner. So that house across from 14 High Street has had three repairs done to their fence in the last 12 months, or a little bit longer, but I know the last 12 months, I've been there and helped get the cars off the fence. In July, there was a car that hit the electricity pole, and I know the police and the ambulance were called, and I noticed today, as I was walking my dog up High Street, which is a little bit further from that intersection, but still is entering towards that intersection near from the life school centre, the pedestrian crossing sign, which is a new pedestrian crossing that's been erected there, you might be aware of that, it's been smashed. So I'm not saying that this development, this property, 14 High Street, will, I believe, could enhance the possibility of future accidents, because the person will have to reverse out onto this particular intersection. And cross over a dual carriageway if they want to head towards the CBD, if they don't, then they still have to, yeah, cross over a dual carriageway to get in and out. And no doubt, there's only a position made for one car park in this property, so that the other people who live in the home will have to park on the street, which will then hinder the viewpoints of how to exit from this property. The property at the moment has a rear access, and all of the homes along that Mundara section, that back onto Bentley Street, all have rear access, which is delightful, that we enter into railway President Mundara, they enter into the back of their homes, they can fit three or four cars in the back of their homes, the caravans, and it has, yeah, so it's ideal, but with the...
No worries, okay, thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you. Councillors, is there any other councillor who has a question, pointed clarification? No, then we thank you very much for your time to join us this evening, certainly in the way that you have. Sharon, you've embraced the technology, and it's been great to have you come and speak to us through the council meeting.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do this.
All right, thank you very much. I'll let you hit leave meeting, and rather than us kick you out, we'll let you hit leave, so thank you very much.
I've got to find the leave button.
Oh, I can, I can.
Thank you very much. I think that's it. Oh, hang on, so, leave.
We've found it, there we go, good, all right. Thank you, councillors. At item eight, we have nothing that's held over for report, we're moving to nine on our agenda, notices of motion. The first notices of motion is the naming of reserves within Latrobe City. Councillor Gibson. Don't you, this has got your name on it, so you'd be moving that.
Moving that, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Howe. Second, any opposition to this? No opposition registered. Councillor Gibson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would like to speak to this. This came about, and this all started from the other meeting, when it was spoken about the Centre of Excellence for the cricket and the AFL for Moor, and there was concern about the naming of it, but it actually morphed from that, it morphed to, well, we've got all of these parks, reserves that are named after people, but nobody knows who they are. Now, I was just going through a short list, off the top of my head, I came up with Edward Hunter, Barbara Allpress, Eric Lukeby, Ted Sumden, Harry Henry White, George Bates, Martin Walker, Greenwood Park, Bert Thompson, I think it is, in Treogon, and they're just off the top of my head. Now, I might know some of those, I don't know all of those, and you've got Peter Siddle, and I would suggest not many people would know all of them at all, and these people have done something significant, that's why these reserves are named after them. So if they're significant, well, I think we should honour them by actually having a plaque, how we do it, I don't mind, but we need to do something so people understand the contribution that these people have put into our community. So that's why I'm moving the motion, and I hope everybody supports it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe, as a second, would you like to speak to this?
I just briefly fully support this motion, councillor Gibson, great idea, I think it's important that we do remember people that have contributed to our, to the building and such of our great city. Also, from time to time, we do need to make decisions affecting those things, knowing whether it will help the community, know what the significance is of the names, it's also going to help us do a better job moving forward, so 100% on it, thanks, councillor Gibson.
Thanks, councillor Howe. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this, say the for or against? Councillor White.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, as always, just, there's a couple of others that sort of crossed my mind too, like, I'm thinking of Matheson Park and Churchill, and those relates back to the former Shire Secretary of the Shire of Moor, and then there's others out at Balarra, Primrose Park, and those sort of things, Giles Bond Park in Yonath, and I think the idea of getting reported and getting a summary of all those parks, or those which have been named in honour of somebody, that they do come together in a report, and that we look at options about how we might be able to have an ongoing sort of visible way of being able to, from time to time, our community to be able to refer to a particular, maybe it's a page on our website that reflects these people's contributions and the reasons behind the particular locality being named in their honour. So I think that's a good, worth, some work we're doing, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor White. There any other councillors who wish to speak for this or against this notice of motion? No, there are no other hands going up. Councillor Gibson, would you like to close?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, one of the ways I thought it could be done is, yes, a plaque or something at the actual serve, but the other thing is, when you go on to the maps and it shows the different parks, if it actually had why they were named after a person, what the name means, utilise the technology, that's another suggestion, how it lands, I don't know, but they're just suggestions, thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Gibson, we have had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. All those in favour of this 9.1 notice of motion? That is unanimous, all nine hands, I can see quite clearly, so thank you very much, thank you councillor Gibson for introducing that, thank you councillors and speakers. We move to 9.2, which is also a notice of motion, which is the review of maintenance of Treogon Creek, Waterhole Creek, Nararcan Creek in the urban areas, councillor Middlemas, this says your name on it, and I see you. Thank you very much, thank you very much councillor Middlemas, and councillor Gibson, I see you, you seconding this, just skip, okay, thank you very much, I have a second. Any opposition to this? No opposition registered, councillor Middlemas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I think all of our residents would know, there is a creek running through each of our major towns, going from the east Treogon Creek, Waterhole Creek in Moor, and Nararcan Creek in Moi. Each of these creeks is managed and maintained from the banks down by the West Gippsland Catchment Management Authority, and basically, they manage them as an environmental reserve. What all the residents of those three towns know is that that is not working, they're becoming a hiding spot for shopping trolleys, dumped garden plants. I know in Waterhole Creek in my town, we regularly pull out 20 or 30 shopping trolleys, we have what people call the funeral lily, growing in abundance in the middle of the creek. We have bull rushes, that is the imported European bull rush, growing in the creek, not the Kabangi, the native one, and to a large extent, there are parts of these creeks in each town which are eyesores and don't reflect the urban nature of the towns in which they're in. At the moment, the Victorian Government's got a fabulous program called the Bush Crew, where people who have lost their jobs in the valley as part of the COVID pandemic are being employed, and the first job they're working on is a cleanup of Waterhole Creek, and anybody who's seen the work that's happening there would be very impressed at the new appearance, and I know they're going on to Treogon Creek and Nararcan Creek, so all towns will get a go of it. The trouble is, there is no funding in West Gippsland Catchment Management Authority to keep this work going, and what we're suggesting here, or what I'm suggesting here in this motion, is that we go back to the government and say, can we review all agreements, all options, and have another look at this, and recognise whilst there is conservation value there, it is also largely, the area is talking about, are largely urban parks, so there needs to be some compromise there. As I say, let's have a look at all the agreements around this, perhaps even let's discuss with the people closest to that area, or the people in all our towns, to see if we can come up with a proposal that will allow us to recognise the urban needs of the area, to make the area look a little more park-like, but still perhaps preserve its conservation values. Perfect opportunity, you'll see there, I'm suggesting we congratulate the Victorian Government, because this is a fabulous initiative, work for people who are out of work because of the pandemic, and they're doing a fabulous job. They've done a terrific job in Moor, you'll see them in Treogon and Moi shortly, but we need to keep this standard up, and I think it's time to go back to the government to discuss this. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, councillor Middlemas. Councillor Gibson, you were the second, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, please, look, I'm more than happy to second this motion, and if I remember correctly, this is a few notice of motions that I've put up, councillor Middlemas is second, and he's put another one up, and it's going back to the government with this issue, and while in the past, we haven't been successful, we were successful with this, Working for Victoria, and actually, they have done work already on Nararcan Creek, so, and Matheson Park, so it is a great project, but he's right, we've done this work, or we're doing this work, and it is looking a hell of a lot better than it ever has, but then what? So the government really needs to come on board and look at, okay, how can we keep this going, otherwise it's been a waste of money. So I'm more than happy to support this, it's something that's so needed, so happy to support, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor White.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, like all the other towns, there is that little creek that, as councillor Gibson did indicate, that runs through Matheson Park, actually, Earlehole Creek, and it's true to say that the Working for Victoria Crew has been out there at Matheson Park in the last week or so, and the Matheson Park Committee is absolutely over the moon with regard to the work that they've been able to undertake, and the difference they've been able to make within the park, and so I think that, like councillor Gibson has indicated, and also councillor Middlemas has demonstrated in the resolutions before us, and that is, it's really important that we have that dialogue with the appropriate minister to be able to get an understanding about the value of what's been done, and that we make sure that, is there some way that we can maintain that improved outcome for the longer... is there some way that we can maintain that improved outcome for the longer haul? And I think that as has been indicated in the resolution before us, it is going to require some funds, and it does, and the program has provided many for work opportunities for our community. And I think that we need to have some way in which we can have this program continue for the longer haul, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor White. Any other councillors wish to speak to this notice of motion, for or against? No, it's silent, councillor Middlemas, would you like to close?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, the speakers have covered it, great work being done by the Bush Crew. It's a great cause, I mean, it's people out of work during the pandemic have been given work. Great outcome, and there's no doubt about that, full compliments to the government. Our problem is, it'll look fabulous, and then it'll go back to how it was. It's how do we, as councillor White said, how do we keep this program going? And this motion suggests talks with the government. All agreements on the table, let's have a look at it, see if we can continue this standard. As I've pointed out, these are not little conservation zones out in the middle of the bush. These are in the urban areas. I apologise for councillor White, I had a look to his creek. And no doubt he'll point that out to me again. But yes, they are a different situation than a conservation zone. We need to reach compromise, we need to keep the work up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemas. As we have had speakers, we do need to put this to the vote, so all those in favour. That's unanimous, we can see all hands quite clearly there, thank you very much. Thank you councillor Middlemas for bringing that to us, and thank you speakers. We're moving to number 10.1 on our item. This is items referred to councillors, council. This is the federal funding for the Moi teenagers, councillor Gibson, I note you. Moving?
Yes, please.
Thank you, I have a seconder. Councillor Law? Any opposition to this councillors? Councillor Gibson is the mover, do you wish to speak?
Just really quick, because we're just noting the report. Look, this has been a long journey with the teenagers. They did want their own standalone premises for just the table tennis for them. But these days you can't have standalone, you can't get a grant to have just one sport. It's always multi-sports. So what they've done is address their most pressing needs, and this is what the money's being utilised for, so happy, happy to move this.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillor Law is the seconder, did you wish to speak? No, not wanting to speak, thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor Gibson, we're back to you, if you'd like to. Okay, no, not to close that, we will put this to the vote, we have had a speaker, so all those in favour. Very clear, nine hands there, thank you very much. Councillors, 10.1 has passed, we have nothing at 11, nothing at 12, nothing at 13. We move to 14, which is the regional city growth and investment, 14.1. Councillor McFarlane, I see you waving, councillor Howe. Councillor McFarlane, are you moving or a question? I just wanted to clarify.
Moving, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councillor Howe?
Yeah, you're second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any opposition to this councillors? No opposition registered, councillor McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may recall that this proposed amendment came before council back in June, after which time it went out for some community discussion. And from that meeting in June, we were advised that this amendment was predominantly bringing together a number of planning documents into the one common language, and so that we can move forward from there. As a result of the community discussion, we had a number of inputs, two of which remain unresolved. And whilst they might not necessarily be specific to the update, what we're talking about, they are still issues with those particular residents. And the only way that we can progress this, when we do have unresolved concerns, is to request a planning panel through the minister, which then looks at the nuts and bolts, and they come back with the recommendation from there, considerate of those other issues raised, and then that comes back to the council, who has a number of options at its avail at that time. So we've been through the process, it's been through this council meeting before. We've had community involvement, and now it's a time for an adjudicator to come in and have a look at the issues, and come up with a possible solution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane, councillor Howe is the seconder, would you like to speak?
Oh, mostly being said, Mr. Mayor, as councillor McFarlane said, this is just the next step in the process. We'll ask the planning minister to establish the planning panel, and then look at their recommendations. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak in the for or against this motion? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the observation that obviously the complexity or the challenge of the outstanding issues that we know will be resolved, in particular those relating down the Latrobe Road area, that it is a complex issue. And I think the best we can do is to have this, as councillor McFarlane's indicated, have it referred to a planning panel, and so that we can have the benefit of their knowledge, experience, and advice in relation to how we should tackle that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor Middlemas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, on the matter that councillor White just raised, I'm very much around this issue, particularly the bottom end of Latrobe Road there. I'm very much minded of the chicken and egg situation. I think we've got a situation here where an industry was established quite some years ago, I think at least 30 or 40 years ago, in what was a backwater fag end of the town, which is now starting to develop into an attractive residential area. And here we have a conflict between, this industry's been there, it's very well established, it's a big employer. If you look at the history of the projects they've been involved in, fabulous number across Australia. But we have to work out how we resolve this issue, because their case is every bit as strong as the case for residential development. And look, I go along with what my fellow councillors have said, we'll send it away to be arbitrated, but I still am most uncomfortable with that chicken and egg situation. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks councillor Middlemas. Is there any other councillor wishes to speak to this? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to close?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, as I said, this whole amendment is just to tidy up a number of our strategies and documents, to bring them into 2020 status, which is, I see as a continuous improvement process, which is great. Through that process, we have these couple of issues identified as both councillor White and councillor Middlemas have mentioned, and they need to be addressed. And hopefully, they will start to be addressed through this process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor McFarlane. The debate now is closed, we're going to put this to a vote, all those in favour? Nine hands, nine councillors with hands up, is unanimous, thank you very much councillors. We're moving to 14.2. Councillor Gibson, I note you. This is the development of land for two additional dwellings and a lot of subdivision in 14 High Street, Moi, and councillor Law, I see your hand as well. Councillor Gibson, you are moving?
Yes, please.
Okay, councillor Law?
Yes, seconding.
Thank you very much, good. Any opposition to this councillors? No opposition registered, councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Look, I have gone and looked at this, I suggest we've both gone and looked at this. And they actually, the planning department, I agree wholeheartedly. One of the, if you look at in the reports, the reasons why inconsistent with the planning policy, inconsistent with the general residential, all of those things. Now, if you go a bit further into it, again, it's saying it doesn't fit with the existing neighbourhood character. It will impact the heritage value of the area, relocation easements, ambient infrastructure now. I don't know about anyone else, but I think it's damn cheeky if I bought a block that's in a heritage area, and I want to get maximum dollar out of that, to the point that I have to, somebody's got to change all the easements for the services. And then at what cost? And that's the part, not the cost of actually moving it, but the cost of safety. Now, I know, I know that road, and we've had a death further down towards the roundabout, but it isn't the safest road at all. As the lady said before me, yes, they've had a number of accidents, and they've just veered across, straight across the road, into the fence across the road. That's just one of the things. Now, they're trying to put maximum benefit for themselves at everybody else's expense, and I think that's damn cheeky. Because if you also look at it, they're actually doing their private open space, but it's actually in the other property. So there's two units that they're trying to put in, and the open space that you are supposed to have for each unit, it overlaps. Now, I think that's damn cheeky to be nice about it. That's just one of the things, there are so many, many others. But I won't keep on going, I'll let my fellow councillor say a bit more.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillor Law, you were the seconder, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, just to follow on from both Sharon, and Sharon, actually, the other Sharon that spoke. It's, what they're proposing is totally out of character for the area. Our planners have definitely got it right. It's very unusual where a developer has a block of land and then proceeds to put actually three crossovers on that block of land, on a corner block of land. So he's got three, he's got three access points to this one block of land, from the main street, from one side street and one back road. So it's totally incoherent, yeah, just not thinking of what it is for everybody else around the area. So I'm totally against this proposal, and I think our planning department has got it 100% correct. And I think Sharon, the resident, has spoken for a lot of the other residents around the area that are totally against this, and I think she got it totally right as well. So I'm happy to support this proposal being knocked back, thank you.
All right, thanks very much councillor Law. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? No, no other councillor wish to, councillor Gibson, did you wish to close?
Just quickly, councillor Law's right, this guy or this person is doing maximum development for maximum dollars in his hip pocket at the expense of everybody else's. You know, that's wrong, I'm sorry. And the neighbourhood have spoken, and fair enough to, and I agree with our planners.
Thanks very much councillor Gibson. So we have had speakers, we've finished the debate now, we put this to the vote for item 14.2, all those in favour? Very clear, I can see nine councillors with hands up, thank you councillors, that has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We're moving to 15.1, which is the inter township trail network. Councillor Middlemas?
Bit slow on the microphone, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I move this motion.
I thought there was an alternate around for this one.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor, I thought I was looking at the alternate, there definitely is an alternate motion.
Okay, thank you, so there is an alternate that's been provided. Yes, councillor Gibson, seconding? Thank you very much. So the alternate, I think, is on the screen, and it has been circulated this afternoon as well. Correct, councillor Middlemas?
Yes, it has been here.
So everyone had a chance to see this? Yep. All right, you can see it on the screen, councillor Middlemas is the mover?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may stop from time to time while I'm speaking, because the local trail bike enthusiasts have decided to exercise on the street, but they've gone at the moment. Last month, the council endorsed a proposal to create a shared path network, connecting the towns in the valley, and eventually connecting all the way along the rail trail as far as Stratford. Now, anybody who knows local government would know that those kind of projects are beyond the funding capacity of local government. They are always funded by state or federal government. An example is the Trelgden and Moor, soon to be opened Trelgden and Moor rail trail, the Warrigal to Druin rail trail, always funded by government. However, to be in a position to make an application for funding for such proposals, one has to prepare at least a high level design, in other words, prepare an application, have the proposals at application ready. So the motion last month called on a report from the offices to give an indication of how such a process to prepare applications would go about, what the likely costs would be, and I emphasise, while I wateringly frightening those costs, the whole proposal is meant to be state or federal grants. This proposal has the potential to become a major livability, lifestyle and fitness asset for our community, and also to become a major attraction for similar minded people from all over Victoria, particularly the city, to come up and enjoy this network path if it is brought to fruition. In effect, it is a spine, which would be Moi to Trelgden, which would effectively be Moi to Stratford, and an off spine, I'll call it, from Merbourn North to Moor, which would then go on to Stratford or to Moi. Following the completion of that spine, the proposal then is to do a secondary level of paths to connect all the towns in Latrobe City. The report sets out the work that would be involved in achieving this, and this motion tries to prioritise and propose how this would be done. And the key in this is that every step would require a decision of council. In other words, if the funds weren't there at the time, it would be put off, and then it would come back to be considered by council. So there's nothing here, we're not committing council to millions of dollars, we're committing future councils to considering it step by step. And I will outline in my closing what those step by step should be, thank you.
As we just had time up, councillor Middlemas, might just see if anyone wants to give you an extension of time, so you're not introducing new information in your closing. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to get caught there. So I see councillor Harryman has given you an extension of three minutes, councillor Howe, seconding?
We just have to prove it first, yeah.
Yes, any opposition councillors? Opposition, all in favour? Another three minutes, the councillor Middlemas, so we don't get caught in a bind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We wouldn't hope, because the detail is going to discuss is in the bottom of the alternate motion. Any chance we could roll it up, so we can see the bottom of it? What I'm suggesting there councillors is that the costing's be done. What I'm suggesting there councillors is that the costing's be done to take the grants in smaller bites, to go to government from time to time, seeking grants to do this elaborate path, this great proposal, is to do it in small bites. Now, the first bite I'm suggesting is Balaro Yonar, simply because there is a community group out there who's already seeking funding, well down the path to having this done. And what I'm suggesting is, all we'd be doing there is offering them sporty kind and help to get this off the ground. So the first section I suggest is Balaro Yonar. The next one I've called Trogan Internal because this is key to the entire network. In a few weeks, we'll open the Mall to Trogan Rail Trail and it'll be a kilometre or two away from the Gipstane Plains Rail Trail, which goes from Trogan to Stratford. We need to connect those. And that'll be a fairly complicated piece of work because it would be great to be able to keep the cyclists away from the main streets in Trogan. It might be that we end up over the McMahon Street side and going around cutting the corner across there. That's for the officers to decide. But that's the key, in my opinion, is getting Trogan Internal correct. The Mall to Ylorn, Mall to Ylorn, Ylorn North and into Moi. The Moi to Ylorn, but is already there in the rail trail. Energy Australia has indicated a willingness to discuss such a trail with us, utilising their assets when they retire the Ylorn W power station in about eight years, 10, 12 years' time. So I'd suggest that's one we need to get some work done. And then I would suggest that to complete the spine, before we go to the smaller towns, we'd go Yonar Churchill Mall. So what I'm looking for here is a suggestion of that we should fund preparation of application ready designs and that they should go to council at each budget. In other words, council would make a decision each year on the money they'd spend on this. I mean, it'd be great to say to the government, what about you pay for the whole plan? That could be another application. But we need to get this rolling. We need to be doing higher level studies, the lower cost studies, so we can say when the government says, has anybody got any application ready plans for work that'll create employment and create lifestyle? We'll say, look, here's one, here's one, here's one, here's our plan. So it's a case of everything to take in sequence. It's a way of exploring, reducing the cost. It's a way of council, this council and future councils, controlling the process all the way through. I commend it to my fellow councillors. I think it has great value for our community going forward. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Middlemas. And thanks for taking on the extension, I think, for this very, very important work that's been done. Councillor Gibson, you were the seconder.
I was. And yes, I'm very happy to support this because this makes us a whole city. You know, it joins us and we talk about being one. Well, this is how you do it. You link us all together. So I commend councillor Middlemas for that. And he's right. This actually brings in tourism, brings people to our area and that's what we wish. Now, as we know, the government comes to us times, at different times and says, right, give us a project. Well, without doing this piece of work, you're not going to get it. So you have to be what we call shovel ready. So this is actually going to make it shovel ready that when the government say, right, have you got a project? We can go, yep, there you go. There's our project. There's the next stage. Wouldn't say no if Ylorn Energy wished to come on board because that part of the equation has been something that the Ylorn North people and the Moi Ylorn rail trail people have been trying to get over the line for a number of years and that would be a great project. So as I say, I'm more than happy to support this for all those reasons and more. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Is there any other councillors who wish to speak? Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. In addition to all the comments that have been made so far, I think that it does represent a real opportunity for us to build on this notion that councillor Gibson had indicated, that connectedness. And, you know, we were often talked about in the, over the journey so far for this municipality that we want to be known as a network city and this really adds to that. But I think also the other thing, a couple of comments that I'd like to make is to have this, these trails in existence really promotes the idea of healthy lifestyles and also for the opportunity for families to get out together and either walking or riding their bikes or on their horses, whatever, you know, to be able to do things together and strengthen the family relationships in that regard. And of course, as councillor Gibson did also indicate, the potential for a tourism point of view, attracting people into our municipality to come and enjoy what we have here and to be able to spend a dollar or two for a positive economic impact, that's another good thing. I'm reminded of, councillor Gibson can talk about this expertly probably, but the big bike path from Myrtleford to Bright and I think it is, and beyond, into Wangaratta, I think it goes. You know, like it's a huge asset for that part of the world and why can't we have the same here?
Thanks councillor White. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this? No? Councillor Middlemas, we are back to you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I want to add to what councillor White and councillor Gibson have said. They're both spot on there about connecting our community. And councillor White's point about the trail up through central Victoria. I drove along it a couple of months ago, going up to a meeting at Wadonga. And I was quite surprised in the middle of the week how many family groups were out on that rail trail enjoying life. So I think we could come up with something to rival, if not better than. And one of the huge advantages that our proposal has got is you could come to Moi, ride to Stratford, put your bike on the train and come back to Moi again. Much of, much of our proposal is covered by the railway line. You know, you could start at one point, finish and come back, come back by rail or bus at just about every point on our proposal. So again, I think this proposal would help set us up as a community. It's a great idea. And I'd like to touch, just as I close, on something councillor Gibson commented on was how Energy Australia is quite willing to discuss this with us. There's no commitment. But wouldn't it be great if the other two power companies decided that they'd like to discuss it with us also? I mean, one of the quickest ways to get from Churchill and Yonar into Moll is through the existing road network in the Enji Works area. As part of the construction of the Loyang project, a bike path was put in from Loyang to Trogan South. Not much effort to connect Loyang back into Trogan. And then we've got another arm of our proposal. Look at the Balaro community. They're full on with the proposal to establish Balaro Yonar without any assistance from anybody, going it on their own. They're running out, talking to politicians, et cetera. I'd encourage other groups to do that too. But, Mr Mayor, I commend this to the council vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemas. We'll put that to the vote now. All those in favour? And that is clear. Nine councillors voting with hands up. Thank you very much. 15.1. Thank you councillor Middlemas. We're moving to 15.2, which is a Hazelwood Pondige update, progress update. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor White? Seconder councillor McFarlane. Any opposition? No opposition registered. Councillor White, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. As we can see, we've got this proposed resolution before us. And just a few comments and observations for me to make in relation to the Hazelwood Pondige. This is a unique manmade water catchment and to create this pondage required a significant disruption to our farming community back in the 60s when it was being developed as the pondage for the primary role of being supporting the functioning of the Hazel Power Station. But in addition to that, it was recognised by the SEC at that time that the pondage had a huge potential as far as being a community asset in terms of water recreation pursuits in all its forms. And for me, this pondage remains a huge jewel in the Lutrob City's crown, as you might say. Its potential to support a broad range of water sports continues to exist, even though the water level has been dropped from 2.7 metres from the original level. And so in terms of its potential for tourism, for day trips, for yachting, for fishing, for rowing, for salability programmes and also for the purposes of having a huge expanse of water for firefighting purposes as well, is critically important as far as the future's concerned. And, you know, it's also functions as a training venue for emergency services, air ambulance and all those, all our emergency people who are involved. You know, for example, when we have the Sydney to Hobart yacht race and we've had the experiences in the past when major catastrophes occurred and our people from the original airport have had to, through the air ambulance service had to respond in those situations. And they get their training by utilising the pondage for that purpose, as I understand it. And of course, the thing is that we've been beavering away as a council on this matter for some time now. And we've, we've had a letter go to, thank you to you, Mr Mayor, to the minister, Minister Symes, and I've got a response from her in that regard. And it's really, she's sort of, seems to be sending a vibe that she's supportive of the idea. But she's saying to us that we really need to be prepared to undertake a feasibility study to understand the future maintenance costs of this facility. And so that's what this is about, this particular resolution fundamentally is about having that opportunity to do that and for the council to be prepared to commit some funds towards a top desktop feasibility study. And also, of course, to delay any demolition of the yacht club facilities there and the aquatic centre. The thing is that the yacht club people are very concerned and about the future and frustrated immensely about all this and feeling abandoned. And what we need to do is going to give them confidence that there is a future still for the Lutrob Valley yacht club at that particular venue, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor McFarlane, you're the seconder. Opportunity to speak now.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor White has said most of what I wanted to say in that it's important that we identify what the many and varied uses of the pondage may be. I think we've all advocated for some time now that we would like to see the pondage retained. However, until such time as we have an idea of what costs from a maintenance point of view, what the issues with the wall, what are the potential attractions that we might bring to Gipstane as a result of retaining the pondage, until we have all those figures at our fingertips, neither us nor any level of government, I don't believe, would be prepared to make any commitment without knowing what those costs are. So what this motion now does, given disappointingly, the state government weren't prepared or able to assist us with a feasibility study, then we need to do that ourselves as an exercise in saying that we are committed to doing what we can to attempt to retain the pondage. So by doing the feasibility study, we'll at least have an idea of what the associated costs, what the benefits and additions that we can bring to Gipstane can be. And then we can, we can look as a councillor at saying, well, yes, we can afford to do this or we need to go cap in hand to talk to federal government, state government or others to allow it to happen. So this becomes the starting point of the next round. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Is there any other councillors who wish to speak? Councillor Middlemas?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. First of all, can I express my disappointment over this process? For 100 years, the prosperity of Victoria has been dependent on cheap power out of this community. Since privatisation, hundreds, if not thousands of millions of dollars of profits have been ripped out of this community. And when it comes to the industry departing, I thought decency would have seen that the pondage would have been left in good condition as the great recreational facility is for the people of Lutrob City. I'm very disappointed. I see a proposal, oh, eventually we'll fill the Mall Wall mine with water and that'll be a great yachting facility. Well, you know, come out and announce the latest proposal to fill it with reprocessed sewage. We, you know, I hate to say this, but we as a community deserve a little more respect from the state government of either colour of Victoria and the power industry around this asset. We've had it for well over 50 years. It's become part of the valley. It's been part of our recreational, shall we say, part of our recreational setup here. And simply to say, oh, no, 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 we're leaving, Enji, we're going back to Paris, we can't be bothered, we're going to demolish it. I'm very disappointed in that. I'm disappointed that the locals, that's us, our council, should have to pay for the study to show that it should be retained. We all know that already. But nobody's going to move until that study is done. But why wouldn't the state government or Enji be paying for that? But I totally support what is being proposed here because if we don't do it, nobody's going to do it and we'll simply lose this asset. So I'm supportive, but gee, I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Middlemas. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Although I'm a bit gobsmacked, I didn't know about the sewage dump in the Hazelwood Pondige. But I'll save that for a later day. Right, I'm very supportive of this project or this motion for a few reasons. Okay, we have a lifestyle, country lifestyle in Balaro Gerolang area. Now, it's got lots of trees. Okay, we have had fires in, we've had the Balaro fire, we've had the Gerolang fire. Now, without us being or without the services being able to utilise the pondage for firefighting purposes, how many more properties would have been lost and or lives? So that being the case, at what cost is a life? So I'll leave it there and that's why I'm happy to support it.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Middlemas, I think you've got a point of clarification, haven't you?
I certainly have, Mr Mayor. I was talking about the future yachting use of the Mall Wall mine, the Hazelwood mine. There is a proposal floating around now to reprocess the southern sewage treatment plant in Melbourne, reprocess water and pipe it up to there. It's not about the pondage, I can assure you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point of clarification there. And that, I think, is a very high level proposal, but nothing that looks like it's on the table yet. So councillor Middlemas is right. Any other councillors wish to speak to this proposal, to this motion? No. Councillor White, would you like to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to reinforce the comments made by councillor Gibson there in regard to firefighting purposes, it's critically important. And as we know, we've got many timber plantations around, surrounding us. And so as time goes by, you know, the capacity of the firefighting regimes is changing all the time and the aircraft are getting bigger. And just imagine that what the Hazelwood Pondige being an ideal resource for collecting water for firefighting purposes. And it has been, but even with the bigger aircraft, it could be fulfil that role more so into the future. And, as I said before, the, you know, the arrange, the array of ways in which the pondage does deliver for us in this area is varied. And in particular also is the economic impact that goes with the tourism aspect of it all. And so I think that, you know, whilst I hear what councillor Middlemas said in relation to the state government or who have been prepared to make some financial commitment to it, I think that if we're prepared to make that financial commitment to it, demonstrates to our community that we're fair and equal, that we've got skin in the game and that we really want to understand the pros and cons. to understand the pros and cons so that we can really be, make a wise decision going forward for the longer haul and have a master plan that's going to really allow for the yacht club in particular, but other recreational groups to be able to enjoy that facility forever. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor White. We're going to put this to the vote now, councillors, at 15-2, the Hazelwood Pondage progress update. All those in favour? And we have nine unanimous hands. Thank you very much to the speakers. We're moving on now to 16.1 Hazelwood House, the next steps. Councillor White, I see you. Councillor Kellygan, I see you as well. Councillor, are you moving?
Moving, moving if I may, please.
Yes, you can. Councillor Kellygan, I see your hand.
Seconding, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any opposition to this, councillors? No opposition registered. Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. And obviously the proposed resolution is to, is the council approves the undertaking expression of interest process for the sale of Hazelwood House. And, and so this represents the next exciting phase in the process of creating a new future for Hazelwood House, which will be for the long term benefit of our community. And can I say also, as is mentioned in the report, that the process of removing the restrictive covenant on the property has now been initiated and is in process. And the consequence of that will be that it'll allow and enable a broader range of potential options for council to consider, bearing in mind the community sentiment in regard to the role that Hazelwood House can play. A number of organisations have already expressed interest in regard to this particular facility and the proposed uses of the site have ranged from short term residential services for families needing early infant assistance, residential services for younger people with a disability, who are currently in residential aged care facilities and a retirement village. And I believe that there may be more. But so that's really good that that's the case. And, and as the council report indicates, and I've got to put it, use these words, as the council report indicates, these options are congruent with the original intentions the Churchill community had in establishing Hazelwood House, which included the capacity for people to age in the community. And of course, at the same time, this facility is in, well, is able to create employment opportunities locally as well. So this is another step in the chapter or in the journey for the new future of Hazelwood House and I commend this proposed resolution to all councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor White. Councillor Kellygan, you were seconding. Did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As councillor White's already explained quite clearly, Hazelwood House does very much have its heart, not only within its physical locality in Churchill, but also within the community who've many, for many years have seen early its development, but continue to foster support for it. With the change that came about, there is an opportunity for council to be able to create a space through the sale of the property and these expression of interest process to see what it is that can be brought about in terms of further community connection of the facility. Facilities like these are always built with good intentions. Unfortunately, as changes take place across a range of services, particularly in aged care, they do tend to be either closing down, investment in or moving on from these buildings and these facilities themselves. In this instance, there was a moving on of the provider, which created an opportunity for us to work really closely with the local community, learn a little more about what they see the future use as potentially being, but also look towards who may be in the market in terms of service providers, particularly in relation to community services and organisations who will be able to not only support the broader Latrobe Valley community, but also create opportunities and further development within that locality at Churchill. As councillor White has already explained, there've been a range of family services who may be interested in the facility. That would be a great opportunity for us to expand into a space that we don't necessarily have available within Latrobe, but there's everything from residential services across a range of disability and further aged extended care services, but also looking towards activities such as retirement villages, all of which are consistent with the expectation of community members. So I do believe there is a valid and live market in terms of people being interested in the facility and the potential that it could bring to the local community. But it's also important to highlight that this isn't just about generating income from the sale, but any income from that sale will be used on projects in the immediate vicinity of that locality to further enhance opportunities for community. But the financial outcome from the project is not the only imperative in relation to this sale. The purchaser would need to be delivering upon a level of service and community commitment that is consistent with the expectation of the community and stands itself in good stead in terms of the values and the commitment of those who have made a longstanding contribution to Hazelwood House's development and ongoing connection within its local community. So this really is an opportunity. I think we can find a good new owner and a great new opportunity for the local community. And we're looking forward to seeing what is brought to bear from placing this into an expression of interest process. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Kellygan. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this, either for or against? Councillor White, did you wish to close?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think that the important thing just in conclusion is to make sure that it's clear to our community that we've not lost sight of the fact that a significant local contribution was made by the community at large in regard to the original establishment of Hazelwood House and has been through a number of chapters along that journey. And, and so, you know, I think that that is understood and will always be in our mind when we're considering further aspects of this particular issue of the future of Hazelwood House. So it is an exciting time and it, I think that, you know, the fact of the matter is that it sends a bit of a signal that there is a likelihood of further investment in the town and particularly in that particular spot and maybe even growth beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor White. Councillors, we're going to put this to the vote now. 16-1, all those in favour? And I can see all hands. Thank you very much. That has passed unanimously, 16-1. So we're moving to 16-2 now. We will note that this has multiple resolutions inside it. Resolution one, resolution two, resolution three and resolution four. This is broken out, so councillors who have declared an interest in direct or direct interest to either one of the community groups or one of the groups who have applied for the grants, minor capital works events and community wellbeing, et cetera. So we'll move through that quite slowly, but the first resolution is resolution one. Councillor Middlemiss, I saw your hand. So this resolution is one where no councillors need to leave. And councillor Harriman, I see your hand as well. Councillor Middlemiss, are you moving?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Moving this one. It's just continuation of council's community grant and sponsorship programme. We've got it in a slightly different format this year. We've, I think we've tried to make it fairer and give a wider go to the community, but this is a programme that's been here for 20 odd years and I know is well received and looked forward to by many community organisations. At the level of help that council gives to many, many of these organisations is appreciated. Now, I don't believe anybody has to leave the room on this one. This must be the only one, is it?
It's such a...
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Harriman, you were the second, you were on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to reiterate what councillor Middlemiss has said, I think it's a great opportunity for the council, for the, for the community and community groups to access funding from council for a range of projects, whether they be minor equipment, minor capital works, events, community events, major events, minor events. It covers a whole range of programmes and events and grants that are available for the community. And I would encourage all community groups to look to these to further benefit the community overall and what they do within the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to resolution one? Councillor Howe, I see you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just building on what the other two councillors have said, we've now got a, this is the first year of a revet, community grants process, where we actually run it twice a year. So for those that weren't prepared or were realising that we do have this grant system, they'll have another opportunity in six months to apply for what they want. So they haven't missed out, they can do it again in six months. And just for, just to give out a couple of figures, we nearly handed out $500,000 in grants this time round. So it is a considerable expense for council, but one that we look forward to because as councillor Harriman said, it gives us an opportunity to invest back into our community, which we will, we're willing to do. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Howe. Is there any other councillor wishes to speak? Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to build on that, I think that it's, as others have indicated, that the new system this year, but the particular point that I would like to make is that this is really a way of acknowledging the efforts of our volunteers in our community who contribute so much to the social fabric of our community and voluntarily. And, and the value that every dollar that is allocated through this grants programme to these groups, you know, the value that it delivers is immense. And I think that, you know, there's some great stalwarts out there who are volunteering their time and because of their love and pride for Latrobe City and the particular groups that they're associated with. And, and so this is a very important programme that, that really does give back, if you like, that in a way that really encourages them to continue their involvement and having come to fruition, the vision they have for their particular groups and organisations they're attached to. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor White. Is there any other councillor wishes to speak? Councillor Kellygan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just further to what my colleagues have had to say, I think it's also important to acknowledge as much of those volunteers are doing a great deal of work in relation to events and also facilities and minor capital works. There were a number of applications in this collective group of initiatives this time round. It also had a significant benefit in relation to access, to ability, but also around community connection. And a number of organisations are really going out of their way under some very challenging circumstances to adapt the way they're interacting with local community and to create opportunities for people to engage with them in more innovative ways and adapting what it is they have available in terms of support for their own membership group, but also extending that opportunity of participation to other members of community who may not have engaged with them in the past. So we thank those groups for being so flexible in their consideration of it and also the levels around the funding that was provided was a little more than previously accessible. So there's certainly been some opportunities there for groups to extend a little more into spaces for projects that they may not have considered in the past. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kellygan. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this? No, councillor Middlemiss, we are back to you as the mover.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A great programme, which has got even better this time round. Great for our community, great for community groups, certainly helps the volunteers out there continually working for us. But as this is the first of, I think, six motions, I won't take up any more time. I commend this motion. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, we are going to put this to the vote now. This is 16-2, but it is resolution one only. Resolution one, all those in favour? That is all nine councillors. Thank you very much, resolution one. We move now to resolution two of 16.2. We have done this because there has been a declared interest in advance. Councillor Harriman, would you like me to press remove or did you want to do it yourself? All right, I'll hit remove. Councillor Harriman has left the room. So councillor Harriman was declared that at resolution two. So I saw a couple of hands there, sorry, I was looking the other way. Councillor Gibson and who is the other one, councillor McFarlane? Councillor Gibson, you're moving?
Yes, I am, please.
Councillor McFarlane, you're seconding. Thank you very much for that. Any opposition, councillors? All right, councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, and it's all just adding on to what's been said. Oh, I think it was councillor Middlemiss said about the community looking forward to these, they do, they actually look at, well, what, what can we put in for this year? How can we improve? So this is a great benefit because it's also community ownership in our area. So without this, that wouldn't happen to the degree that it is. And right, I think councillor Howe said it's 500,000 that we're putting in towards these grants, but that 500,000 goes so much further because the community are putting so much more into it. So we're getting millions of dollars worth of projects out of the community and us working together per se. So it's a great win for all.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's all been said.
Thank you very much. Any other councillor wish to speak to this resolution two of 16-2? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to close? Shake your head. All right, then we'll put this to the vote. This is resolution two of 16-2. All those in favour? Now, we have eight hands up, so that is carried unanimously. We will get councillor Harriman back in if we could, Mr CEO, thank you very much. And councillor White, you're going to drop out from, for resolution three of 16.2. Councillor White has gone. Councillor Harriman arrives in the waiting room, joining in. Councillor Harriman, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
We have moved to resolution three now. Councillor Middlemiss, I note you. Councillor Howe, I note you, moving and seconding, I presume? Thank you. Any opposition, councillors, to resolution three? Councillor Middlemiss, did you wish to speak?
I think my answer to that, Mr Mayor, is no. I've already spoken at some length about this programme, so we'll give that a miss. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor.
All right. Any councillor wish to speak to resolution three of 16.2? No, as we've had no speakers and we had no opposition to it, we'll carry that unanimously. So thank you very much. We'll invite councillor White back in and then we'll move on to resolution four, where I am the councillor who in question for that. So I will remove and I hope that this does not end the meeting and everyone closes down, but I'm sure that I've, I've appointed a co-host that who can look after me while I'm there. So I'll just check. I can leave, can I? Change the host of the meeting? Mr CEO, I might get you to exit me if you can kick me out and invite me back in.
Thank you, councillors. So we now are on proposed resolution four of item 16.2. Do I have someone, councillor Middlemiss moving? Councillor Howe seconding. Councillor Middlemiss?
All being said, thank you very much.
All being said, thank you Chair.
Okay, councillor Howe?
No, thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Any other councillors wish to have any discussion in relation to this matter? If not, no opposition to the motion. I missed that bit, but we're back on track. As there's no opposition to the motion, I'll declare the motion carried and ask the CEO if he'd, ask the mayor if he'd like to come back and join us.
I have asked the mayor to return. Not coming back though.
We'll just give him a minute. It, we might have taken him by surprise being so quick.
Efficient. Run the rest of the meeting.
No, thanks.
Put myself on mute and give him a call.
He's back.
And I'm back.
All yours, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor McFarlane for chairing that. Much appreciated. Just to get everything lined up again. We move to 16.3, which is our reconciliation action plan. Councillor O'Callaghan, I see you.
Moving, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gibson? Moving, seconding, sorry. Thank you. Any opposition councillors? Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the matter concerning our reconciliation action plan endorsement. Councillors will be familiar with this document because we did have a draft of the plan come to council in May. This resolution is to have council consider the endorsement of the reconciliation action plan and its release to the community. The plan itself has been in, in train for a number of years. This is a body of work that we continue to do on an ongoing basis. I'd like to thank Suzanne Miller and her team for the work that they have undertaken in relation to the community engagement, but also in bringing the information together that we needed to ensure that it is the most appropriate and respectful plan that we can bring to our community. There have been, there have been four key focus areas in relation to the plan, being relationships, respect for culture, opportunities and governance. As we work through each of those areas, there are key partners that work with us and inform that work. They also help us to develop a range of actions that are incorporated into the plan itself. This gives us a frame of accountability so that we can ensure that what we're doing is further facilitating the development of these trusted and important relationships. And it also gives us a guide for deliverable items within the plan. In relationship focus, we're establishing and maintaining those relationships that we have with our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community. And we thank Glawak, the Gunno Keno Land and Waters Aboriginal Corporation, for their guidance and support in the development of this area of our document. But their overall support and consideration in our learning and our understanding of the best ways to move forward with some of the actions we have in terms of that relationship building work. Respect for culture is a very important part of the plan, building on the understanding and recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander culture and the importance that that has, not only within our community, but within the work that we do together. And opportunities which gives us that concentration on what we can do to improve circumstances and pathways for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community members in relation to social and economic outcomes within our community, but more broadly across our partnership agencies as well. The governance area of focus is how we're going to oversight and look to administer this plan. And we thank the working group who provided their ongoing support and guidance in relation to the implementation, the commitments that we're making as part of the plan. And importantly, our Brackalong Advisory Committee always have great pleasure in spending time with Brackalong Advisory Committee members and they're very generous in their support, advice and work that they do to underpin our decision-making. Councillor, they have absolutely no hesitation in recommending to you the endorsement and release of this plan.
Thank you very much councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Gibson, you were the second up. Did you wish to speak to this?
I was, and just really briefly. Look, I endorse what councillor O'Callaghan has said. And this has been a long, a long awaited document that they have been waiting for. So for all of those reasons, I'm more than happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson. Is there any other councillor who wished to speak? Councillor O'Callaghan, did you wish to close?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to thank councillor Gibson for her support in relation to the work and the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we're going to put this to the vote now at 16.3, the reconciliation action plan. All those in favour? Thank you. All nine hands seen. Thank you very much. That has passed unanimously. We move over to 17.1, which is the financial hardship policy. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor McFarlane, I see you. You have a second up. Councillor Gibson? Any opposition? No opposition registered. Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, briefly, Mr Mayor. Council does have, currently have a, has a financial hardship policy, which is, was prepared some many years ago. It's a one pager and fairly brief and generally relates to applications related to rate relief only. Now that we're in a, a new environment, a COVID environment and a number of hardship situations around us, this policy allows us to, to address those issues of hardship relief in a 2020 sort of situation, given that it's now been updated. So it really was getting rid of something that was fairly basic and, and making something now that's quite workable. So I certainly support this policy and recommend to council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. Councillor Gibson, you were the second up?
Yes, I was. Look, I'm, I'm happy to support this. There are people in our community that need our support. So we need to have a, a policy to ensure that we can do that. Happy to support.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this? For or against the policy? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think that the only thing I'd like to add is that as we saw, with the original policy was based purely and simply on individuals, but if providing this is accepted, the saving that it will expand to some extent to individuals and businesses who meet the hardship criteria. And, but, so that's a a more, a broader base than historically has existed. And, but, you know, it's, it's in the times that we're experiencing at the moment that we really, it's timely that we look, look at this particular policy and to see whether we can tweak it in a way that's affordable. Thank you.
Thanks councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor McFarlane, as the mover, an opportunity to close. All right, no closing. So councillors will put this to the vote now. All those in favour, raise your hand. And that is unanimous all hands. Thank you very much. We're moving to 17.2, which is the public transparency policy. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor Gibson, councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson, you're moving. Councillor Howe, I take it you're seconding. Yes, thank you. Any opposition councillors? No opposition registered. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please. I think it's imperative that we are transparent on all our, our dealings. Even more than this actually, but it is imperative. At the end of the day, the, the people are your bosses. Now, they have a rights and it's their rate payers money that we deal with. They have a right to know what we are doing and how we're doing it with their money. So more than happy for transparency and even more so. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe, you're the second up.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. This is another policy that is a consequence of the new Local Government Act of 2020, which was, which was approved, the draft policy was approved at our July meeting. This has gone out to, to the public for their sake. And now it's just come back for our endorsement. As councillor Gibson said, very important that we are a transparent council. Some of us ran on, ran in the last election, running on, on one of them as our policy. And I think we've come a long way in the last four years in improving our transparency, but still, still plenty more work to be done. So very happy to second this and support councillor Gibson.
Thanks councillor Howe. Is there any other councillor who wishes to speak to this at 17.2? Councillor Gibson, we're back to you as the mover. Did you wish to close?
No, look, I, I just want to say I, I thank my fellow councillor for his words and I agree.
Thank you. Councillors, we're going to put this to the vote. All those in favour? And all hands are up, so that is passed unanimously. Thank you. It's 17.2. 17.3 is the governance rules, including the election period policy and local law one, which is the local law that we are currently under at the moment for meeting policy. Councillor O'Callaghan, I note you, moving? Thank you. And a seconding. Councillor Gibson, thank you very much. Any opposition councillors? Opposition registered or a question? Councillor McFarlane, you have a question?
Question, Mr Mayor. I just thought there was some little, a couple of words that needed some change and there was a proposed alternate. Am I right or wrong?
Just check that with the governor's tent. Mr CEO, can we just check if there was, I'm not sure if there was a alternate to the recommendation?
I did circulate an alternate for council's considerations. I'm not quite sure whether that was, it's not the one, I don't think displayed on the screen, but I'm sure councillor O'Callaghan is moving the original or the, the old, I didn't want to be presumptuous.
All right. Well, at the moment, we, we were dealing with the one that was in the agenda, so, and has been said otherwise. So that, I think, I believe councillor McFarlane, you're, you're saying that there was an alternate?
Yeah, there was one sent to us this afternoon at 3.34, which just referred to amendments to clause nine in appendix two. I think everything else was pretty much the same, but I would assume that that should be available somewhere there.
It, it is available. In the interest of good governance, good practice, we are talking about the resolution that has been put at the moment, which is the proposed resolution. Councillor Gibson, did you have a question?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Can you scroll it up so we can see point nine, please?
No, it's clause nine in the document, councillor Gibson. So the, the proposed alternate was just point one. And what I have is that council adopts the governance rules and the revised election period policy with amendments to clause nine in appendix two with an effective date of eighth of September and then everything else as is.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Councillor Middlemiss?
Mr Mayor, would it assist if I was to move an amendment along the lines of the alternate motion? Would that get us through this?
Oh, absolutely. Or we could foreshadow that we'll talk to the alt if this is, this is lost. So either all, but we could certainly make an amendment. I believe that the amendment only talks about the revised policy. Is that correct, Mr CEO?
Yes.
Yeah. We could, we could do that. Councillor O'Callaghan, I'm aware that you're the mover here. How did you want to proceed with that?
I'm going to die a ditch over this one, Mr Mayor. I've got some thoughts in relation to it, but if we can either put the alt, happy to, with councillor Gibson's agreement, if she would prefer, and we can just debate that. And if there's any concerns arising out of that, then they'd be considered more thoroughly.
Okay. So you're, you're happy to, to put the alt as it is, as it's been circulated?
Happy to put the alt as it was circulated by the CEO. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much. And councillor Gibson, you're happy with that? Thanks councillor Middlemiss for the offer, but I don't think we need an amendment on that one. I think we're going to run with the, the odds.
That's fair enough, Mr Mayor. Just looking for a way through, that's all.
That's very good, very good option. And thanks councillor McFarlane for making us aware of that. So we now have an alternate motion, which has a mover and a second up. Is there any opposition to this? All right, councillor O'Callaghan, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is really just a, an opportunity for us to have clearly defined outlining of the rules and the obligations as it pertains to this period of time that we'll be entering into. It's important that we're clear and that as an organisation, the governance rules are clearly articulated in relation to our election period policy. As with all of these things, we try to ensure that everything we're doing is consistent with the guidelines and laws in relation to this. From time to time, we do need to make adjustments as things need to be adapted. We also need to make sure that this information is available to the public so that they can be, across all of the matters presented, scrutinize them in a way they may wish to, but also raise any questions that they might have as well. I think what we're presented with here is a very clear outline of the current election period process in relation to community expectations and standards. It makes it fair and reasonable, but it also provides a very clear guide in an operational context for our organisation, which is important because we all want to make sure that everything that occurs in relation to the timeframe and relation to the work undertaken is fair, reasonable and equitable. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm happy to endorse that and I think it's wise that we have clear definition of what the rules are. The community know what's happening. We know what's happening. So.
Thank you very much. Is there any other councillor who wished to speak to this? No. Councillor O'Callaghan, did you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think for the most part, the community may not even be aware of some of the things that change. These are very much things that happen to make sure the operations are looked after. But if anyone does have any questions in relation to it, of course, they can always contact the CEO and have a chat to him. And he'll be up and very, very happy to explain it to them in all sorts of detail. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
So it's, it's good light reading, but important reading. So all right. So thank you very much. So we are voting now. We have speakers. We're voting on the alternate motion that was being put, moved and seconded. All those in favour? Thank you very much councillors. That is carried unanimously. Thank you for your working it through and the options there. We're moving to 17.4, which is the review of council delegations. Have a mover for this? Councillor Harriman, councillor Howe? Any opposition? No opposition registered. Councillor Harriman, did you wish to speak?
For small procedural, Mr Mayor, so no, I'm fine.
Okay, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
I'm just going, Mr Mayor.
Any other councillor wish to speak? So being no speakers and no opposition, we carry that one unanimously at 17.4. 17.5, we're moving across to the establishment of community asset committees under the Local Government Act 2020. Do I have a mover for this one? Councillor McFarlane, second up. Councillor Howe? Any opposition? No opposition registered. Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak? We just got you on mute there councillor McFarlane.
Sorry, I was there. I thought I'd unclick myself. Like some of the other resolutions that have been moved tonight, this, this item is to satisfy the requirement. uh, this, um, this item is to satisfy the requirements of the new Local Government Act, uh, which in fact become effective from the first of September. So we've had a little bit of a gap in the middle. However, Mr Mayor, uh, this recommendation, uh, and report recommends that what were our, um, special committees that existed under the old Local Government Act now become community asset committees. So it is a requirement, um, due through that process to come up with, uh, the the terms of reference, which are predominantly the same as what they were before and for an instrument of delegation from the CEO to delegate, uh, the authority to those eight committees. Again, similar to what it was before. So whilst there's a lot of paperwork involved and there's, uh, and it's basically again because of the process, we're reappointing the existing members to the committee. And there's a couple of exceptions, uh, there. One was, um, to do with the Law North Housing, um, Special Committee, that was to add a a council officer, uh, to that committee. And there was another one where there was two, um, uh, resignations from another existing, uh, uh, committee. So all in all, Mr Mayor, as said, this is about tidying up what our committee structure was to what our new committee structure is in accordance with the, uh, the new legislation, which takes effect, as I said, from the first of September. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McFarlane. Councillor Howe, you're the seconder. Did you wish to speak?
Oh, very, very briefly, Mr Mayor. Um, just to, um, highlight what councillor McFarlane has said, that effectively there's no change, um, the committees that that we've run in the past, uh, which we 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 see as a very valuable committees to help, um, control our facilities. There there's going to be this very similar moving forward, same same sort of structure for most of them, same members on the committee. So no, no real change, just, um, as councillor McFarlane said, just moving in line with the Local Government, the new Local Government Act.
Thank you very much. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Harriman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's just appropriate to take, take this time to to thank those members of the community who've given up their time to to serve on what is a large number of of now special committees, uh, for council. Um, thank them for their time and thank them for putting their hand up to continue on, for working with us and accepting the changes that had to be made under the the changes to the Local Government Act. And, uh, wish them all, uh, continued success with a wide range of community assets they look after on behalf of our community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Harriman. Is there any other councillors who wish to speak? Councillor White?
Yeah, just quickly to endorse the remarks of councillor Harriman and and other councillors too, for that matter, in relation to these committees. They do play a vital role in our community. I'm particularly, uh, focusing on Madsen Park Committee, uh, at the minute, but they're all important and the Rose Garden, one of the, but the, let's not isolate them, but, uh, re- acknowledge and recognize the value of contribution each of these committees make and, uh, yeah, so, uh, I just want to, uh, and, um, sort of build on the remarks made by councillor Harriman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak to this?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor. I think it's all been said.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor McFarlane. We shall put this to the vote. All those in favour? Uh, to all hands. So thank you very much. That has been carried unanimously. We're moving on to seventeen six, which is tabling of the assembly of councillor records. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor Midlemis, councillor Gibson, happy to second? Thank you. Any opposition councillors? Councillor Midlemis, do you wish to speak to this?
Uh, procedural, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Gibson?
Same, procedural.
All right, no opposition councillors? All right, no opposition and no speakers. We carried that one unanimously automatically through. Uh, we moved to item eighteen, which is urgent business. I don't believe there's any urgent business before this council this evening. None that have been notified, Mr CEO. No, thank you very much. Move on from that. Uh, then we move to nineteen, which is a recommendation to close the, uh, council to the public for consideration. Councillor Gibson, moving. Councillor White, are you happy to second? Okay. Any opposition to this, councillors? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? Councillor White? Uh, no speakers and no opposition. That one will carry unanimously as well. Thank you very much, councillors. Uh, we're closing the meeting off, uh, to the public and we, uh, thank the public and our community for joining us, uh, via our Zoom, uh, live stream by YouTube. Uh, and, uh, wish everyone well and to take care and to stay safe, uh, in these, uh, challenging times. So thank you very much for everyone for joining us. We'll, uh, bid you goodbye and continue on our meeting in a closed session. Thank you very much. Good night.